Is researching family history. So, as I said, we're going to be looking at researching family history and in particular, taking a look at online resources. Because the last year or so has certainly demonstrated that sometimes it may not be possible to visit the library or the archive service. And the wonderful thing about Heritage Week, which we're celebrating this week, is it's a great opportunity for us to kind of share some of the resources that we have available to people and give them an opportunity to find some of those resources as well. So that's what we're trying to do here this morning or this afternoon. So to have a look at some of the records that are available, we're going to talk about civil registration, which is births, deaths and marriages. The church records, the baptism and marriage records, census records, the 1901 and 1911, and I'll tell you a little bit about why it is 1901 and 1911 only. Electoral records, property records, estate records, and some of the records of professions. So that's what we'll be having a look at today. The first thing to say is when you're starting a family history search, it's a really good idea to take a look at what you might have yourself already. In some families, they're really good at keeping maybe an old biscuit tin with copies of birth certificates, baptism or marriage records, confirmation certificates, photographs, newspaper articles with birth announcements, things like that. So it's a good idea before you even get started to take a look at what you have available, so that you have as much information to hand as you can get. And as part of that, it's also a really good idea to ask your extended family members what information they have and pool the information that you have together. Just to give you every opportunity you can get to make sure that you're starting from a good place in terms of the amount of information that you have. In a lot of cases, families have the stories of the family and it's a good idea to gather this information while you can. One of the most common things I hear in the archive is people just bemoaning the fact that they didn't take the opportunity to talk to an elderly relative while they had it. And when they were younger, they might not have been as interested. So while you have the opportunity, do talk to your family and squeeze them for every last bit of information that you can. And as I said, take a look at all of the records that you have, try and pull out as much as many dates and as much information that you can from them, so that you can use that to follow when you're starting your search in the records themselves. So when you're doing a search of the records, there's a couple of pieces of information that you definitely require. First of course is the family names that you're interested. And in terms of the personal names, one of the practices in Ireland was that the first names were often repeated through the family. And you can often trace the generations through the use of the names. So first sons were named after the father's father and second sons after the mother's father, the first daughter after the mother's mother, and so on and so forth. So it can be a handy guide to kind of making sure you have the right family if you're finding the right Johns or Patricks in the sequence that you'd be expecting them. But what can sometimes happen is when a family divides, you know, in the same area, it can be a little bit confusing because there's two branches, but they are using the similar sequence because they're both referring back to the same great grandfather. But it is, it can be a little bit helpful to distinguish between, say, one power family and another power family in an area. However, the most important one is the one I put in the middle. This is, and I've pointed it out in my text here to say, this is very, very important, the townland or the street name. This is because all of the official records are organized not by the personal names, but by the place names. So if you're looking for a family by the name of Power or Walsh or person or Hogan, these are all really common names, particularly if you're in Waterford. Certain areas of the county, it'll be, this is known as Power County, so you'll find lots of powers. And there's certain parts of the county where you'll find lots of Walshs or Welshes depending on the branch of the family and the pronunciation that you're going to use. So the townland name is incredibly important to want to identify that you have the right power family or the right Walsh family. But the other thing, as I said, is all of the records are organized by place name. This is largely because records are not created in order for us to research family history. They're usually created because of land. And in Ireland, land was paramount, the ownership, the occupation, the access to having the bit of land was absolutely vital. So most of our records are organized and are created because of land and claims to land. In terms of dates, you don't have to be accurate in your date range, but it can be helpful for you to know generally when the family might have left the area. So that you're not actually looking for the family 50 years after they're gone from the area. It's not final, but it can just, it can save you from a little bit of searching. As I said, coming back again to the family names, spellings can vary. For example, if you look at surname like Mah, you can see it's there as M A H E R, M E A G H E R, M A G H E R. Coming back to our Welshes, you have Walsh, W A L S H W E L S H W E L C H. You also have the Irish for Walsh, which is Burnock, and you also have the Anglicization of that Irish, which is Bronock or Brenock. So all of those can actually be the same family and the same surname with different branches going for different spellings. So when you're doing the search, it's important not to get too caught up in the spelling that your family sort of stuck with later on. Because one of the things that is in terms of the records is in a lot of cases, people weren't literate themselves. And certainly they weren't in control of the record. So the record was usually written by somebody else who was hearing the name. So they are hearing and spelling what they heard and the spelling that they choose is determined by their own inclination and also by how good they are with the local accent. The reason I say how good they are with the local accent is in a lot of cases, you're talking about official records being created sometimes by people who are coming from from the UK, from Britain to be sort of the official registrar or record keeper in a lot of cases, and they are not familiar with the accent. And if you know a good Waterford accent, sometimes if you go deep into West Waterford, it can present some difficulties. We actually have a lovely collection of pay records from a gardener who was coming in the Lismore Estate. And it's actually, it's very clear in his earlier records, he had no idea what some of the men were telling him their names were. And it's only as he gets used to the accents later on that he figures out a lot of them were Fitzgeralds. But his attempts at what they were saying can actually be quite funny. You also need to be very skeptical about the uses of the prefixes, the Irish language practices. So when you're looking for Brian's, make sure to try the Brian or the other spelling Brian. And for McCarthy's, try Carthy, Carti with a Y and Carti with an I E. Again, this is because Irish speakers lost the, being able to put in their O's and M's after the 17th century. And then in the late 19th century, as part of the Gaelic revival, a lot of people started adding it to their name as part of their interest in Irish history and Irish culture. But not every member of the family did. So you start having this differentiation within the family itself, where one sibling might be O'Donovan and the other one is Donovan. So don't get too caught up in whether or not there will be an O or an M there, try it both ways. So as I said, one of the most fundamental things to keep bear in mind when you're doing any family history research is the place name or the townland. So townland is the sort of the smallest denomination. So you've got your sort of 32 counties in the country and then each county, there were baronies, within each baronies, there are civil parishes and within each parish. Then you have the townland. So it's the smallest official designation. And you can see there, I've picked Ballycoudra and the barony there is called here, the civil parishes, St John's without, and the Catholic parishes, St John's. So civil parishes were actually a reflection of what would have been the Church of Ireland parishes or the official recognized church parishes around at a particular point in time in the early, sort of late 18th, early, late 18th century. But they later, the later Church of Ireland parishes don't correspond with the civil parishes. So in Ireland, you have civil parishes, which are the sort of official records, you have your Church of Ireland parishes. And you then have your Catholic parishes. So there's a number of parishes to bear in mind. However, once you have the townland name itself, you can find all of the rest of the information. And the place to go for that is a website called logannum.ie. And they also have wonderful resource where you can actually look at their scanned archival records. And that gives you the information from the place names branch into the history and the development of that place name from some of its earlier iterations to what we would recognize today. So you must have the townland name. And it's a good idea to check that you have the right townland. In particular, if you're from Ireland itself and you know the physical location, it's a good idea to go into the map and just have a look at the townland boundaries. Cities and towns have expanded and so locally, we might know the area by the housing estate name that's a little bit later rather than the townland name. And again, if you're looking at the records, they won't be organized by the housing estate name, they'll be organized by the townland name. Also in rural areas, people start to use the nearest local post office sort of as a broader definitely broader name for the area and stop in some cases using the townland name. So again, if you know, if you know the location, double check the map. There's a reason I picked Ballycoudra as our example here, and that's because if we take a look at the Ordnance Survey map. This is actually Ballycoudra in here, this little thing here, and this yellow bit is actually Waterford City. So this is the 1842 Ordnance Survey map and actually the city has expanded quite dramatically. And I think if you were in the city, you probably, if you're not familiar with the townlands, wouldn't necessarily know that technically you're in Ballycoudra. You'd be using the street name and I think you might be saying you're in heading towards the work, I see might be saying you're in saying, heading towards Grange, you might be saying Holbury, that direction. So Ballycoudra might be the thing that you think of. So that's why it's a really good idea to look at the Ordnance Survey maps. And the Ordnance Survey make their historical maps available for free online. It's a really fabulous resource. You have to go into www.OSI.ie. Then it's slightly more complicated in that you have to go into professional mapping and then products. And then you'll find a list alphabetically of the different types of mapping and the one you're looking for is called Historical Data. And when you click on that, it gives you this fabulous collection of maps. You can see the 1842 original maps. And the later 18, sorry, 1920s one. And also you can see some of the area photographs, more recent ones as well, and the current, what they call the Geo Hive map as well. So it's a really good way and you can move between the wonders of modern technology, you can actually overlay the current Geo Hive map on on the older 1840s maps. So you can sort of get an idea of where things are nowadays versus the 1840s version of the map or the early 1920s version of the map. So in some cases, those are surveyed in the 1880s. And the 1842 Ordnance Survey maps are absolutely wonderful. They are, if there's ever a query about the accuracy of the map, of a map, this one will be the absolute accurate one. And there's some, if you're interested, there's some really good publications on the history of the Ordnance Survey and the work that they did in Ireland. In coming up with new ways of surveying and measuring. And maybe Tracy or Debbie or somebody from the library might be able to give you the name. It just escapes me. I think if it's called If Maps Could Speak is the name of the book. But if you're interested in mapping, that's a really good book to take a look at because the Ordnance Survey maps are amazing. And well, we're a fabulous, fabulous resource. So the other thing to bear in mind is that there may be more than one townland of the same name. Sometimes we can get a little, we can wax a little bit lyrical about our place names and our fabulous place names in Ireland, and we have some fabulous place names. But also at other times, we are not quite so poetic and lyrical in our place names. And here's a demonstration of of new towns in Waterford. And as you can see, there are a lot of them. Some of them are electoral districts, but a lot of them are actually townlands. There's quite a significant number of new towns, not just in Waterford, but across the whole country in Ireland. And even if you look in, it can come up in other ways, Villiers Town in Irish is on Baljanua, the new town. So sometimes you'll find the same townland name and there's different locations. So again, that's why the maps are really, really important to bear in mind as well. If you're not familiar with whether physically where they're located, it does mean that you have to check the records for one of the new towns. And if there's no sign of your family, then you know that there's another new town or at least another few new towns for you to take a look at as well. It does extend your research, but at least you know not to stop if you don't find them in one of the new towns. Or one of the Agbises or one of the other place names. So we're taking a look now at civil registration, the records of births, deaths and marriages. So the general registrar's office is located in Roscommon, but there's a research room that's in Dublin. Again, at the moment, they're not open as far as I'm aware. But there is a fabulous website called irishgenealogy.ie, which has been made available by the department. The Department of, it's, oh, now is it's Department of Tourism, I forgot what the current iteration of it is. But certainly the Irish government has made available the birth steps and marriage records on irishgenealogy.ie. In addition to the civil records, there's also some Church of Ireland records and some Catholic Church records that they're working on, but that's, that's been a bit of a slow process. And if you're looking for some certificate that falls out outside of the range of dates, you can also apply for your certificate, certificate online on the website www.certificates.ie. However, because of data protection, you need to have all of the personal information, the names, the dates and the information in order to make that order. The earlier ones are available. So in relation to civil registration, civil registration began, well, attempts to introduce civil registration began in 1845. And there were some Church of Ireland registrations from 1845. Initially, the Catholic Church were incredibly resistant to it and they felt it was an attempt by the state to take away an important role that they were fulfilling. And so they were very much against it, but after much negotiation, a mere, not quite 20 years, they, it was eventually it was eventually agreed that the Catholic Church would also comply with civil registration requirements. So that's when civil registrations actually began in Ireland. It's in 1864. So if you're looking for ancestors who were born, who died or who were married before 1864, then civil registration will not be the resource for you. The ones that are available online on irishgenealogy.ie, births are available from 1864 to 1920. They stop in 1920 because of the data protection. So they won't be available after that because you need, it's personal information. Deaths are available from 1845 to 1945. Have I got that the wrong way around? I might do. The 1845, there's a little caveat on that in that they, as I said, this is a little bit to do with whether or not they were being, they were being used. And in some cases, they, they wouldn't have been used by the vast majority of people. And again, marriages from 1871. The caveat on that is just that they, if you do search for them, you may find them, but the actual link to the image isn't there. And they are working on adding the earlier ones from 1864 to 1871. So it may be there. It just, it just, it might be missing at the moment, but they are working on adding back to 1864. Now, the important thing with civil records is you need to squeeze every single bit of information you can out of these records. And there can be a lot more than sometimes you can realize when you look at them. So if we take one as an example, this is a marriage record from 1884. And you can see Michael Cullen and both cases, they don't give the actual age, they just say full age, they're legally able to marry. But if you see here, you'll notice that Michael is actually identified as a widower. So straight away, you know that he's been married previously. So you can go back and check your records and see, is there another marriage that he had? And check then the death records for his wife. They also give his rank or profession. So in this case, he's a farmer. Farmer is means that he has land. Very important if you're getting married at that stage, that he had the bit of land. And you can see that the townland given there at the time of his marriage is Lacandara. As he's a farmer, then more than likely that is where the farm is. And you'll notice his father's name is given again, another Michael. And very importantly, they've also pointed out that he's deceased and usually, not always, but usually the registrar will actually indicate whether the father is deceased. So that again is a very important piece of information because if you're going back doing another search, it lets you know if you're looking for the death of Michael Cullen and he has died by August 1884. So you're searching between 1864 and 1884. And again, you can see he's a farmer. So more than likely, Michael isn't for heritage of the farm from Lacandara. And Mary Walsh here, again, she's full age and Spencer, she hasn't been married before. She's also a farmer. So she's coming from land as well. You can see their coolness mirror and her father is John Walsh, also deceased and also a farmer. So there are two farming families that are getting together. You'll note that their mothers are not recorded. Again, it comes back to that thing about land, I'm afraid. So the fathers are recorded, the mothers are not included. And it's also the father status that is giving the status, if you like, to the son or daughter. So both of them are coming from farming land. If the father is a laborer, that again is sort of indicates. It indicates if, if she was the daughter of a laborer, then she's marrying up and it's harder to kind of make those marriages work. Because usually in that kind of marriage, there she's either bringing a bit of land or she's bringing some resources into it. So marriage is not necessarily it's not the, it's not necessarily a romantic thing always, although it can be, but also it's about joining families and about families being able to survive and thrive. And that means bringing the bit of land or the bit of money or the profession or the rank. So those are all very important pieces of information that can be included in the in the marriage record. And you can see there that they got married in the church in Coligan. And also what can be very useful is to bear in mind who was witnessing the marriages because sometimes they're an indication. In this case, the, it's Michael Cullen and so it's James Cullen and Joanna Carroll. So that Joanna Carroll may be indicating a family connection. So it can be an important little piece of information to bear in mind when you're continuing your search. So aside from the civil records, there's also the Catholic records of baptism and marriage. Now, baptismal marriage records usually start in the 1820s in particular. There's a very specific reason for that. Obviously, when sort of in the 17th and 18th century, it was not possible to practice Catholicism freely because the Church of Ireland or the Protestant Church was the officially recognized state church. So that's why you have things like mass rocks and people were secretly practicing their religion. As a result, it's not a good idea then for a priest to have a written record of who's secretly practicing religion that's not actually being recognized. And particularly in the 17th century, it would have been things like priest hunting. Those are things happening across the land. So very dangerous time to have a record of who was actually Catholic. However, by the latter part of the 18th century, that's not happening anymore. There's a, there's a relaxation of that. There's a recognition by the state authorities that you know, to that sort of, to a certain extent of the freedom to practice religion. So what you find is that it takes a while then for people to feel that safety. And also then it takes a while for them to get together to be able to actually have a church. And so it's not until that there's a physical church where the records can be held, that you find there's records existing. And therefore in places in cities and towns, it happens a little bit earlier. So you'll see in Waterford and Ballybricken, their baptismal records are starting in 1797 and St John's 1706 in Dunkarvan 1787. So in some of the kind of urbanized areas, they'll start a bit later. For a lot of the more rural areas, it's usually a little bit later, often around, as I said, the 1820s. Again, that's a sort of indication of Catholics being freer to kind of do better in society, to make a little bit more money. And then they can contribute to things like collections for the, for the building of a new church. And once you have a new church, then you have a priest who has a place to put the records. So it's a very practical reason as to why we don't have parish records up until quite, you know, quite a later date. So the local Catholic clergy maintained these records and the quality and the legibility vary. They Latinized the name. I say Latinized because in some cases, some of them weren't great at their Latin. So they kind of use makey upy Latin names. And it's only the first name that's Latin, that's given in Latin and the surname is given in English. The, and also, as I said, the quality and eligibility vary depending on the, the sort of the, the access to ink and the, the quality of the priest's handwriting. So the National Library of Ireland holds microfilm copies of these records and they've made them available on their website. So if we take a look at one of them here, this is from Dunkarvan in 1787. It's from March. And you can see the priest here, as I say, because they're individual to each priest. In the early years in particular, there's lots of different odd shapes, different sized notebooks, different types of pen, different ink. Some of them get very hard to see because obviously the priest is watering down the ink. So he's running out of money and he's spreading out the ink a little bit further. And it's only later that you get sort of in the 1880s onwards where you get these specific columns and more standardized books. So at this point, you also have this particular priest. What he's done is you can see this here is, he shortened it. It's Johann, so for John. And he's got this F here. So again, he's, he's obviously a big fan of shortening out his records. Often you have what looks like an F and L and it's filius or filia legitimus. So filius for son, filia for daughter. You'll also sometimes see filius or filius, filia illegitimus, as in an illegitimate child. And so you can see that John is the son of another John here, but you can see he's got a little dot, so he's shortening it out. He's not, he's not writing it in full. And then underlined here is the surname Driscoll. So he's John, son of John Driscoll. And this little line here is E T for and. So son of John Driscoll, Ellen, and again, he's shortened it, Ellen Neil. And the paternity or the godparents, again, he's shortening it out. So he's got his little shorthand, John Mahoney. And M A R, which could either be Maria or Margaret. Unfortunately, in this instance, his shortening has made it a little bit harder to guess. I'm thinking it's more likely to be Maria because he probably will have put in the G for Margaret. And again, she's, she's Kelly. So you can see the baptismal records when, from the church can be a little bit more difficult to decipher. And they do, excuse me, require a little bit more work. But there are online services like Find My Past where somebody has done that work already. And if you subscribe to those services, you can actually just do a search by name and hopefully bring them up. But of course, that does lead to the danger of whether or not they've actually interpreted the idiosyncrasies of the individual priest in terms of their spellings or their, the use of the names correctly. So it can be a good idea maybe to do your first search if you have a subscription to something like Find My Past. And then just double check the original record, just to confirm the information that's there. So the Church of Ireland records also have their chequered history in Ireland. And the church, the starting date for a lot of the Church of Ireland baptismal and marriage record can begin much earlier in the case of Christchurch in Waterford, it's 1655. However, because it was the official state church, they were required to deposit the records in the then Public Record Office prior to 1922. The reason I put down 1922, of course, is that as a result of the destruction of the public record office at that point in time, the very obedient priests in the Church of Ireland who had deposited their records in that office. That resulted then into the destruction of those records. Luckily enough, not all of the priests were that obedient or indeed that timely. So a lot of them were slow to be sending them in. And we're very fortunate that they were. So there are a set, there are some records that are available. And the representative church body in their Anglican records project have been working on making those records available online. But also they very helpfully have created a PDF indicating what records there are and what survives. The National Archives holds some of the records as well. And in some parishes, you'll find the records. So this color code was created by the representative church body to show where some of the records were. So you can see some of them were in the representative church body library in church town Dublin. Some of them are in the Public Records Office in Northern Ireland. Some of them were lost in 1922, but they've managed to locate some other bits and pieces. And so that's what we've got you green. Some of them are completely lost. Some of them were in what was the Public Record Office in Ireland and were later found in the National Archives. And so we have, they're there in the National Archives. So this PDF is a really good resource if you're looking for Church of Ireland baptism and marriage records. We move on now to the census returns. Unfortunately, again, as a result of the destruction of the Public Record Office in 1922, there are only two complete surviving returns for Ireland. So in 1901 and 1911. And these are available online and searchable from the National Archives. It's census.nationalarchives.ie. Again, coming back to my earlier point, you need to use every single piece of information that they provide. Pull out everything you can see, you can get in terms of their ages, the occupations, the place of birth. So if we take a look, here's just a record in Ballymacarberry. And you can see you've got Edmund Nugent and he's the head of the family. He's Roman Catholic. He's giving his age here as 51. And he's a farmer who's married and he's originally from county. He was born in county Waterford. He has Irish and English. Again, it's, this piece of information can be useful because sometimes it can indicate that somebody was not from Waterford or somewhere else. So it gives you another place if you're trying to track down the family. Again, the census gives the relationship of each person to the head of the family. So you can see his wife Margaret is listed, his son Edward, and their daughter is also listed. And the son and daughter are 16 and 15. And they're listed as farmer's son and the daughter is still in school. And they also have a domestic servant. This would not have been And they also have a domestic servant. This would not have been unusual at the time. Nearly every farm, even quite a small farm, would have had a domestic servant. But you can see here, I don't know if it's very clear in, from the screen, but you can all, you can see that he's actually, he's actually signed it himself. So he's literate. In nineteen eleven, this is the same family and you can see that there's additional piece of information that's very useful. So in the additional piece of information, they've indicated that they've been married, they've asking people how long they've been married. So they've been married for twenty eight years. This is a useful piece of information when we go back to our Irish genealogy.ie website, looking for a marriage certificate. Because it tells us the date, the year, and that they would have been married using the twenty eight years information from the nineteen eleven census. In nineteen eleven, the other thing that they were concerned about was they were trying to get a handle on the infant mortality rate, which was incredibly high in Ireland at the time. So one of the things they were asking people were, how many children have they and how many children were still living? And this is actually a sad but incredibly useful piece of information. And you can see in this particular family, they had six children, but only three of them were still living. And so it's, again, it's a very useful piece of information, but because it brings you back to your civil records to check for the death records for the other three children, it gives you another source of information. Now you'll see their family has expanded as well because there are two nephews, two other Nugents living in the, and they're listed as scholars. It's not an unusual situation. It doesn't necessarily mean they're Nugent, so they're obviously related to Edmund himself. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're orphans coming to live with the family. It could be a reflection of a very common practice at the time where their, their family may have been more rural and this family are actually living in Ballymacarberry town itself. So they may have come into town to live with the family while they go to school because it would have been too difficult to be travelling from further up, possibly further up the hills in Ballymacarberry direction into town to get, to get to school. So this would have been a very common practice. But what it does is it gives you a little line of inquiry into another, another branch of the family and gives you two more children's names that you might not have found otherwise. When we look at electoral registers, again, in Ireland, there was an incredibly limited franchise. You had to property of ten pounds in the counties or you had to be forty shilling freemen, forty shilling freeholders or freemen in the, in the boroughs, in the cities and urban areas. What that meant is that you had incredibly small, lovely people who had a right to vote. And it's only until nineteen eighteen that we get universal suffrage. However, in nineteen eighteen, it's bear in mind that universal suffrage was at the age of thirty for women and twenty one for men. So when you look at some of the electoral registers, you may be expecting to see some of the female members of the family and they're not there. And it might be not that they're, they're somewhere else away from the family, just that they haven't reached thirty yet. So there's these little bits of information can be very useful when you're looking through the records. So this is an example of the registration from nineteen twenty three in Kilmac Comas. And you can see the, the information there. And so it's not, it, it just gives you the, the name of the person and the townland that they're in. So it's, it, it just really is kind of an indication that they're still living in a location. Unfortunately, we have very mixed survival rates in terms of our electoral registers. So I think after this nineteen twenty three one, the next one I have is nineteen forty six. So there are very big gaps. The electoral registers, so we, you can, you can come in to view these because they were public records, but we can't actually digitise them yet because it would be a breach of Dash protection. So at the moment, it's possible to view the hard copy, but it's not possible for us to do a searchable database. We will eventually, when they reach the age that we can do that. But there are limitations in terms of Dash protection and other issues that sometimes mean we're not able to digitise some of the records. As I said, a lot of the records that are created are created because of property. And but it's because they were created, we have family history information. So some of the property records that we have are tie the plotment books and they go to the eighteen twenties, eighteen thirties. We have Griffiths valuation. That would be from the eighteen forties and the valuation and rate books that continue on from Griffiths. And then later on, well, earlier on, the estate records. So I'm going to take those bit by bit. The tie the plotment books, they were created as a result of a survey which was begun in eighteen twenty three. So the purpose of this survey was to ascertain the tide payment, payment to be paid by individual landowners to the Church of Ireland. Remember, the Church of Ireland is the official state church. So a tie the one tenth of the, of the harvest is due to the official state church. And originally, they would take that as a tenth of the harvest, usually in grain. So there used to be sort of grain stores that the, the church had for the, the, the one, the one tenth or the tide. So by the nineteenth century, they thought, you know what would be handier? Cash. Cash would be so much handier than grain. So they began doing a survey to work out the different, the, the valuation of the land to work out what the cash equivalent of one, of the tide would be. So they, what they did is they had the land that was first, second, third class land and obviously the better quality land had a higher valuation and that's how they worked out what, what would be owed. They were incredibly unpopular in Ireland, as you can imagine, for a lot of people who are Catholic. The idea of paying a tide to a church that they, they didn't follow and that they didn't attend was obviously hugely, hugely problematic. And it's one of the reasons that we have the tide wars. Now, the surveys were carried out by different commissioners appointed to each parish. And as a result, the quality varies. And they predate the, the organ survey mapping. So the townland names can be a bit different. The organ survey, because it was such an incredibly detailed and immensely valuable survey, one of the effects it had is it sort of set in stone some of the townland names and boundaries and earlier things like tides and border guards and townlands kind of, they could change a little bit. So one of the things that happened, say, in Waterford is there's an area of mountain called, that was called Sleeve Green in the tie the plotments. And that has about twenty or thirty different townlands within it. And they're taking that Sleeve Green identification from the Villiers Stewart Estate records. Some of the commissioners were, well, we don't like to say it, but possibly a little bit lazy. And they kind of called into the largest local landowner and said, look, give us a general indication of your, from your rental books about who's where and we'll sort of copy that down. And that's, excuse me, what some of them did. The type of plotments and whereas other ones did a really detailed survey and did quite a bit of work. So it varies from place to place. Now, the tie the plotments don't exist, don't identify the exact plot. This is a bit maddening. So for somewhere like Sleeve Green, it's very maddening because I can't tell you exactly what townland connected up with the later records because there's no map. So we're sort of giving a general area in some cases. But in other, for other families, because the townland is quite small and because the family are always there, you can very definitely connect it to the later valuation record. It does provide the acreage and the quality of the land. So again, the acreage and the family name can connect us to the later records. And they are available online from the National Archives. It's tie the plotment books.nationalarchives.ie. I'll give you a little look at one of them. This is the type apartment for Aglish in the parish of Lismore eighteen thirty four. And you can see they're going to give you the name of the occupier, the amount of acreage, the kind of quality. And then in this one, they're kind of giving you little observations about who owns it or what might have changed in terms of ownership. So that can be quite useful as resources. Again, there's a reason that I picked this Aglish. This is not the Aglish that is, that might be more well known on the, on the River Blackwater, just near Villiers Town. This is actually Aglish further up near Lismore towards Tallo. And that's again, why I, why I say particularly, if you're looking at family and you're not from Ireland, it's a good idea to double check your place names because there may be more than one, one of that townland. And you might be not finding them because you're looking in the, in the wrong Aglish. So it's just something to bear in mind. So Griffiths valuation, again, another property valuation. This was undertaken between eighteen forty seven and eighteen sixty four. And it was overseen by Richard Griffiths who standardised the information. So unlike the tie the plotments, there's a standardised production across the, the whole, the whole creation of these records. And they also sort of ensured quite detailed and very good survey work. And they had the benefit of being able to do it using the mapping that the organ survey had provided. So it was a really detailed and good record. The reason that these records were created, again, it comes back to taxes. This is in order to determine the valuation of land. And from that valuation, it's two particular taxes. One is the cess or county cess that was used to fund local services. And the other is the poor rate, which was used to fund the workhouses and other public health services. I don't know if anyone is familiar with the curse in Ireland, bad cess to you. So as you can imagine, people weren't great, great fans of the cess tax. Later on, after eighteen ninety four and ninety eight, the county cess and the poor rate were combined into one, one new tax, which was rates. And so that's why you have valuation books and then later the rate books. The map to accompany us is really brilliant because it allows you then to identify the exact location and with the piece of information from the survey. It's available online at askaboutireland.ie and you just click into Griffiths valuation. And you can search by place name or by the, by the townland name or by the family name. So this is the information that you get in Griffiths valuation. So you get a plot number here. You get an occupier and you get an immediate lesser description of the property, the acreage, and then the valuation of the, of the land and the buildings and then total valuation. And this is very useful because in a lot of cases, occupiers weren't recorded. And in some cases, this might be the first time you're seeing a family member recorded in the official records because they, they are, they just tend to show and sometimes in the tie the plotments, as I said, they didn't do as detailed a job. So you might first, for the first time, be seeing your family listed here. You'll sometimes see, I don't see an example of it there, but you'll sometimes see, there's a quick one here. So you can see that Michael Walsh is an occupier from the market of Waterford. And then he in turn is leasing a house and yard to Bridget Payne and John Diggins. So you, sometimes you'll see the fact that there's a tenant who's leasing from the main landlord owner and then in turn is leasing further to, to another occupier. So what they have there is the occupier and the person they're directly renting from. Now, sometimes rather cruelly, you might have a family that was living there, but they're subletting from somebody here and they won't show up in the record. And that's just unfortunate in that it can happen sometimes that later on you'll find them showing up in the rate books and they might have been there earlier on. It's just that they were subletting and not showing up officially because they weren't the ones directly paying the cess and the poor rate. So this is evaluation maps. You can see it has the plots identified and it has the plot numbers. So it's a great resource for connecting the information from the valuation book directly into the map. So you can see exactly what piece of land the family were occupying. And as said, you can see that, 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 that information is in askaboutireland.ie. So the property rates were collected by the grand jury and then the grand jury was abolished under the eighteen ninety eight Local Government Act and the county council was introduced instead. So ownership and occupation of the land and property throughout the county can be traced from Griffiths, which was published Waterford in eighteen fifty one up to the nineteen seventies. And then I very kindly put in with gaps. And in some cases, those gaps can be huge. So in, in some cases, we have the next valuation book after eighteen fifty one, we have is eighteen sixty nine. And then in eighteen seventy five, rather than having a book each year, somebody got the fabulous idea that they'd have just one book and writing the changes. So eighteen seventy five into the eighteen nineties, early nineteen hundreds, there's one book with changes kind of crossed out and written in. But unfortunately, they don't date the, the changes. So in, for those periods of times, you're saying sometime between eighteen seventy five and eighteen ninety is there was a change in ownership? Or that the, you know, the change in the family. So you're moving generations. If your family were in a farm or in a house within the one area between that period, you can actually trace them the whole way along. Again, there's a gap in a lot of cases in the early nineteen hundreds. Sometimes there's a gap between that eighteen nineties right up to nineteen thirty five and another electoral districts. We can be lucky and there's an earlier one for nineteen twelve. So and in the city, it's even more cruel in that there's a gap between Griffiths and the next rate book we have is nineteen oh six. But then afterwards were fairly continuous with the, with the rates until rates were abolished. And as I said, the valuation books only record the name of the person who's paying county cess or rates. So if you're subletting or if you're not paying your taxes, then the name's not recorded. The Griffiths valuation is available online, but the later valuation books are not yet digitised. So that means you do have to call into us or the valuation office in Dublin also holds those records as well. And some cases, they don't have the gaps that we do, depending. So this is just an example of one of the, the books. You can see this is the village of Ruth Gormick for a later weight book. And you can see what I mean about they cross out the name, cross out the old name, put in the new name, change the house, change, you know, they, they add in all the changes as they go along. So they can be a really valuable resource when you're researching family history. That's the barony of Upper Third. We're moving on now to estate records. The land estates in Ireland were fundamental importance to the economic, social, political and environmental development of a county. And from a family history perspective, they're very important because where they do survive, they can provide tenant records from much earlier dates. Because usually, as you may have noticed, when we were looking at the records, we're talking about the nineteenth century onwards. And particularly for small farmers, for tenants, for labours, there's just no record of them prior to the nineteenth century because they're not landholding and they just don't show up. So the tenant rental books are one of the greatest resources for, for family history. Unfortunately, they don't often survive. As I said, when we looked at Griffiths valuation and the rate books, you'll see the name of the immediate lesser is usually the landowner. And you can check landestates.ie, which is a searchable database of landowners. And it gives some information on surviving records. And a lot of cases, a lot of land estate houses were actually burnt. And it's, some of them earlier in the nineteenth century, some of them as in the nineteen twenties. So as part of the War of Independence. So in a lot of cases, records were, a lot of those tenant records were destroyed. And in other cases, the family moved to English estates in, you know, from the eighteen eighties when they start selling off the land, right up obviously to the War of Independence. There's another resource called I A R dot ie, which has archive collections across Ireland. So that's another good way to check to see are there any land estate records surviving? They are scarce, but it is worth taking a look. They can be held in local archives. As I said, we have some of Lismore estate papers. We have Charlie and a couple of other different estate records here. They can be held in the National Archives, the National Library, or they can still be in private hands. As I mentioned, they can also be held in the UK because a lot of these estate families, the Irish lands were just part of their overall estate and their main seat was in England. And so when they sold off the land in Ireland, they took all their records and everything back to the main estate in England or Scotland or Wales or wherever they were. So similarly to I A R, there's a website, a searchable website called Archives Hub that you, or even if you just put in searchable Archives website UK, you should hopefully get that in. Or you'll find the link in the nationalarchives.gov.uk and that might be your easier way to get it. So estate records can include, as I said, rental books, tenant application books. The Lismore Estate is actually a very well-run estate and they have tenant application books for tenants who are looking for assistance to emigrate. They were looking for building materials to improve their holding. They were looking for the estate manager to intervene where they were in conflict with their neighbours. So there can be huge information in those tenant application books. There's also correspondence, there's accounts and legal records. Things like the fixing of fair rents in the eighteen sixties generated a huge number of records. So they can be, they can be available in the estate records. Excuse me now. So we'll move on to records of professions. Unfortunately, trades can be a bit difficult to track down because many of the trade societies that were there from the medieval period just didn't have their records survive and they're not available to research. But what is available in a number of local authorities and local counties are trade directories. And you can find them in your local library. And here in Waterford, we've actually made some of them available and searchable online. I had a look yesterday, it's down. I will let IT know and we'll get it up again. It might be up since, just sometimes some of the links get broken and they have to be rechecked. So but if you check on the, on the council website under family history, there is, that you will find the trade directories. There are other professions that actually leads to records, things like the military, legal, medical profession, ships captains, government bodies. So again, look at things like your census, your marriage records, things like that, to see if you can identify the profession. And that would lead you to where you can actually go next. Now, this is a big plethora of links. And as I said, we will be recording this. So you, you will be able to get back into it again. So just to kind of give you a little snippet of some of the different types of records that will be available for different professions. There's a register of general shipping and seamen available from the National Archives. And again, you can just go into the National Archives website and just search their catalogue and that'll bring you up to that registrar. It's from eighteen sixty three to nineteen twenty one. The Royal Irish Constabulary, the Police Force in Ireland, again, that was a British control Again, that was a British controlled pre- police force, so the records are actually with the National Archives in the UK. They have a research guide available on their website. Again, you can go into just their main website and um you can, they have very good, very eas- easily. Now, easy to navigate websites that will help you find um the the records, so you can just put in Royal Irish Ca- um Constabulary. But you you will also find find my past dot I E, that subscription service that I mentioned. They have made that um searchable by name um by working with the National Archives in the UK. So if you have that service, you can actually check um those records. Again, there are some gaps in the records, there's um, there's a couple of um books written um with indexes of the Royal Irish Constabulary officers. You can have a check of that and just see if there's any mention of them there as well. Um the British military, um again, the National Archives in the UK, if you take a look at their website, they'll give you, there's a whole different section of them, they have them from nineteen thirteen, they have First World War. Um soldiers, they have um other other records as well, so if you take a look at that. Um anybody who has been um following anything in relation to the decade of centenaries here in Ireland will be familiar with the Military Archives here in Ireland. They have been doing phenomenal work in making um more and more information available. And if you check their um archive, militaryarchives.ie, they have a section in relation to genealogy. And um there's lots of information there as well. The reason I point out military, both in terms of Irish and British, one of the things the military does. Um is it also lists dependents, because they're one of the places where a pension is available. And they list physical features, so they can be a really good source of information. Because um they kind of give a little bit of information about if it's, you know, the the next of kin, because they may have to contact the next of kin. If they're, if the member of the military um dies on in service. But the other thing um in in particular, both in terms of constabulary and the military, is you don't get posted to where you're from. So they kick, they keep a record of where you're from originally, to make sure that you're not serving locally. So none of the Royal Irish Constabulary members, if you're from Waterford, you didn't serve in Waterford, just in case, there will be a conflict of interest there. Um Gardaíchea Corner records, um they, again, the Gardaí have been working in more recent time, uh for the last number of years. Um in relation to getting their um records more organized, there's um some of the databases there, particularly um about. Um some of some of the service members are who died in service, things like that. So again, if you contact, you can contact them if you're interested in researching a a member of the family who might have been a garder. You may have, in in Ireland, a huge number of um family members, and it was considered a great honor if a family member was a member of a religious congregation. And joined a religious congregation, so this website here, churcharchives.ie, has a directory of all the archives of the different religious um religious archives. Um and that's a great way um to try and track some of tho- those down and see if you can find some of the family members there. So um what about, not professionals, what if you're, what if you're going to prison or you're heading to court? So the library service here in Waterford have um some of the prison records and the court and jail records for Waterford available. They're available on microphone at the moment, um they're not accessible, um just local studies isn't available at the moment, but it will be again soon. And if you have any queries, um Blahin and the other library staff in um in Waterford will do their utmost to help you in the meantime. The prison registers are also available online from that subscription service, Find My Past, and possibly from Ancestry as well. Immigration, so uh in our, in this, obviously, Ireland had a huge amount of immigration, so there are lots of different records that you can pursue. Um the Ireland-Australia transportation database is available from the National Archives, it runs from seventeen eighty eight to eighteen sixty eight. And um it has records that have been taken from the court and other records and the shipping records. In relation to those who were um sent, uh who were transported to Australia. Um I mentioned there, the tenant application books for the Lismore estate, one of the projects that we did is we created a database of um. Uh as of tenants who were given assistance to emigrate to lots of different places, um particularly. Um they, in 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 huge number of cases, they went to various parts of America and to Australia and Canada and to other parts of England. At the moment, that's down, it was connected to a system that isn't operational anymore. So we're putting our heads together and trying to work out um how to get that up in a different format, so it will be available again. But in the meantime, if you have any queries, send them in to me and I'll do my best to to answer them. And in America, prior to Ellis Island, Castle Garden was the um immigration center in New York. And they have a searchable database that's free, um it's called castledgarden.org. And then, of course, Ellis Island itself has um a searchable database. And um, sorry, now, excuse me. The um library and archive in Canada. Probably easier just to go to the main library and archive website in Canada and take a look. Um they have um specific pages in relation to um immigration um from Ireland. And some of the resources and different sources that are available. Waterford has a particular relationship with Newfoundland in Canada, so again, if you go to the Newfoundland Archives there, you'll find more resources and information. There's actually a really good resource in Australia, the True Newspapers Online, um it's true.nla.gov.au newspaper. Um there's an awful lot of um, this this has newspapers and gazettes. And they often would have um information, particularly when they're talking about deaths. Um and where they say, uh they might say sort of um John Walsh from um Lismore County, Waterford, originally from Lismore County, Waterford. Died, so it's a really good place to check um before you come to, you know, before you're looking in Ireland, because in some cases, um they do actually give information. And in some of those death records, they actually say surviving him is his brother who's still in Lismore or his sister or, you know, that that kind of information. So it can be use, very, very useful. Newspaper records um as a, on a, as a whole are very useful, particularly um uh in relation to death notices and things like that. We have a lot of our newspapers available through the um library website, um available online, so they're organized by date, so you do have to look through them. One thing to bear in mind is that they're not consistent, and particularly in the very early years in the nineteenth century. Sometimes people who would have quite significant status in Waterford um won't have any death notice in the paper. Um it seems to be at the whim of the editor at the time. So in some cases, you'll find lots of information and in other cases, not so much. Um the Irish Newspaper Archive again is a wonderful resource, so it's another subscription service. And it gives you access to other newspapers um throughout Ireland. And that is searchable and can be really, really useful. And the Irish Times Digital Archive is also there available as a searchable resource. We come on to burial records and um we have a number of burial records um barking between myself and the archive and the library service. And um you'll find them on Underwater Council, if you go into Culture and Heritage and just click on Research Family History, you'll see. We have grave and script and a grave inscriptions database. This is using work that was carried out by um community groups and also um really brilliant individuals like Julian Walton, who did a huge amount of work in the eighties. Taking um uh inscriptions from graveyards across the, um across Waterford City and County. And lots of different communities like Tallo and various other places where they gathered up the information from headstones and recorded them. And they're now, that's now available as a searchable database. And we also have a number of burial registers that were digitized um from the archives, so Saint Daphren's in the city. Saint Declan's in Ardmore, Saint Carthages in Lismore, Saint Patrick's in Tramore and Saint Mary Cemetery in Butterstown. Saint Mary Cemetery in Butterstown is actually, is actually an official register, it was um again, um information that was. So it isn't a register, but it was gathered by the community and um it it would be, the other ones are council registers for what were council burial grounds. And they um they can be a little bit later, because um it's only when the council took them over. In Waterford, we're also incredibly lucky that Thompson's Funeral Director is very kindly shared with the library their funeral books. Um which we, um which they, which were digitized. And um they're available up on the website there as well. And they, Thompson's would have been one of the um, one of the biggest funeral directors in um in Waterford City. There's also other resources like findagrave.com, but Find a Grave has our, where somebody, uh again, it's similar to the earlier grave subscri- inscriptions. Um where somebody is visiting a graveyard and doing some research themselves, they kind of take images or information from other headstones. Um so that they can help other people when they're in their quest to find information. So sometimes that can be useful, because they may have, um they may have visited a burial ground you're interested in. And again, when you're looking at the headstone, come back to making sure you can pull every piece of information that you can get from the headstone. The ages, the dates, the dates of the death, so you can go back if you can get a a civil record of the death, all of those things. Um in death records, you're looking to see who was the informant, what the relationship was to the um, to the person who died. Every piece of information that you get, squeeze it for every, you know, every bit that you can, because um every little bit that you can can lead you to somewhere else. It's um, so it can be a little kind of breadcrumb trail that can sometimes give you a um whole host of information you weren't available, weren't, didn't realize was available. There are um some genealogy services available that, uh you know, if you want, if you're not in a position to research yourself, the National Archives. Has a list of genealogists, as does the National Library. As I said, there are subscription services like Find My Past and like Ancestry. And also, there's a very good um website called Irish Genealogy Toolkit. Um which uh gives you a really useful guideline on how to, what records are available and how to get started. And so if you are starting out on this, then that's a really good one to look at. In our own website, um you'll see, um if you go to waterfordcouncil.ie and click on Services and click on Culture. You'll see on the left-hand side, Research Family History. And that's where you'll find um a lot of those resources that I refer to there, the trade directories, the death registers, the burial registers, things like that, they're all available there. There's also a publication that we did some years ago on researching your family history in Waterford County. And um that was uh quite a few years ago, so at the moment, we are updating and revising that. So hopefully, in the next year or so, we'll have an updated um publication, again, telling people how, what resources are available and where to find them. So I hope you found that useful, and if you have a question, and um as I said, I'll take a look at the chat now and see if I can answer it. And in the meantime, if you don't want to put it in the chat, but you do want me to have a check of something, my email is archivist@waterfordcouncil.ie. Um or you can give me a ring if it's too complicated to explain in an email. And so hopefully, that gives you the information to get started in your family history search.